Okay, I am calling to order this regular meeting of the Cordova Recreation and Park District Board of Directors at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. We are going to have a moment of silence, so if we could all please stand and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Board of Directors. I'd first like to talk to us, talk to you a little bit about why we're here doing this moment of silence. This is for Judy, or Judith Godney, who was an employee for the Park District for 29 years. She started, I believe, in 1988 until 2017. And what's interesting, she worked at our kiosk, but really, her whole family has worked in that kiosk. Her parents, Otto and Mom Marge, worked since the mid-'70s. And also Melody and Trixie, who are here in the back of the room, they're here to join in this moment of silence. I just want to say that Judy was so special. She did work under my department for a while, and her and Melody are just wonderful people, wonderful community members, and care so much about the park. They just took that, Pagan Park was their park. I mean, we all kind of talk about our park in our neighborhood, but they were custodians of that park in a way that was quite exceptional. They even were helping their parents when they were kids, when her parents worked at that kiosk. So I really want to express how much I care about Judy and their family, and how welcoming they've always been with myself and Gail and anyone who's worked with them, and take this opportunity to do a moment of silence, starting now.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome Dan Miller to lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And Planning Manager Laura Taylor would like to say a few words.
Good evening, Board of Directors and staff and public. I just wanted to say a few words about Dan Miller here. He is a licensed landscape architect with the Calendar and Associates, and they have an office in Gold River, very nearby. He has been licensed for 25 years and working in California on many parks within the Sacramento region. And you folks are familiar with some of his work. He designed Labyrinth Park, Cypress Grove, and Pyramid Peak Parks. And in the past, he also worked on Rosemont Community Park. And so he is also here tonight to support staff with the agenda item G1, if needed. And he is here as a representative of Calendar Associates, associated with that item as well. And so, Dan, I didn't know if you wanted to say a couple words?
Thank you. Thank you, Lord, for having me in the honor of saying the pledge. I just want to say how much of a pleasure and a privilege it has been to work with the district on these projects, both directly as a consultant, working with Laura and with Christina, and as a teammate on putting some of the turnkey parks together in a collaboration that we've had. Always, both Laura and Christina have been advocates for the communities where these open spaces happen, and their feedback has always been helpful and enriched us. And they've always pushed us to push our designs and creativity and sustainability in those parks. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
We received advance notification that Chair Vice Chair Reyes would be absent this evening. Director Sloan, Director Dancel, Secretary Yearwood, and Chair Lineback.
Here.
Okay, and now it's time for board disclosures on action items. Does anyone have a disclosure? Okay, we will move on to our consent calendar, then.
I believe it's item B for public comment. Members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It's a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And I do have two speaker requests. I'd like to welcome to the podium Ellen Gantz, please.
I'm Emily. Can I go first?
Of course. So we're welcoming Emily Sunahara.
Sunahara, yes, thank you. I'm Emily Sunahara, and I am a member of the Larchmont Riviera community that is next to Larchmont Community Park that is part of this district. I'm here tonight with my neighbor Ellen. First of all, thank you. Recently, we reached out to the district about a broken slide, and that was recently replaced, so thank you for that. And we just wanted to come here tonight to start a dialogue with the district about our park. We currently have a soccer club that leases out the majority of the space for our park. It's a very big park, but we also have a small playground and a tennis court. The tennis court is going to be resurfaced, which we are very excited about, as many families in our community use that tennis court regularly. And we hope that one day the park can offer maybe tennis lessons during the summer, as you do across so many of the other parks. But again, we wanted to start a dialogue with you guys because our community surrounding the park is a young community. We are a community that is seeing a revitalization. A lot of the older homeowners are starting to turn over, and now there are quite a few young families in the neighborhood that frequent the park. That's where I met Ellen. That's where I met all of my friends in the neighborhood, and we've started a regular group that meets there with our children. And there are quite a few things that could be done with the park to make it a little bit safer for children, more accessible for families. I don't want to, I'm trying to respect the time limit here, but I am just here to figure out, how do I even start that process? I don't know. I don't know who to talk to. I don't know how this works, which is why I'm here tonight. So that is, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We can take your information, and we'll have a staff reach out to you just to kind of engage in kind of some of your ideas that we have, so.
Hi. Hi, Ellen.
My name is Ellen Gantz, and as you heard, I'm a neighbor of Emily in the Larchmont Riviera community. And the idea to come to this meeting started because of this slide that was broken for well over a year. And especially during the pandemic, it was, there wasn't too much to do but to go to the local park. And you just can't keep a five-year-old away from a slide, even when it's covered from the top. They were climbing up. And more than once, my son's arm got stuck in the slide, and it's that panicked moment of, is this the time he's really going to get hurt? And just seeing it be over a year, the moms in the community were like, we have to do something. This is just, we need to get this slide fixed. And that's when we came together, we met at the park, and magically, the slide had been fixed. So that was a relief. But then, since we were there with our local realtor and these other moms, we were like, hey, we really love this park, and it seems a little downtrodden, especially when we see these beautiful other parks in the Cordova Recreation District, that we started to think, well, what can we do to help support putting a little more love into our park? And so some of our ideas were some shade covers for the summer. We looked into, can the tennis courts be redone, and found out that there had already been money approved for that. So is there anything we can do to help get that process started? I played tennis in college. I would love to play there again, but the conditions of the court, I wouldn't play right now. I'd go to another park. So to hear that that's in the process really just helps you feel like, wow, this is going to be an even better, more beautiful place to live. And if there's anything we can do to help support any more funds going into the park for extra features, for a toddler park, for shade, whatever the case may be, as a community, we'd really like to support that and would appreciate your thoughts on that in the future. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And, you know, just sort of a rough suggestion is just crpd.com. And there you'll find contact information for lots of the district departments. So now it is actually time for the consent calendar.
Yes, thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. This evening, we have nine items for your consideration.
Okay, so is there any item on this consent calendar that anyone would like removed or pull for a discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
She's supposed to ask the audience if they want to pull anything?
They turn in speaker cards if they want to comment on an agenda item. This isn't, the Zoom meetings, you know, were a little awkward, but in the live meetings, consent, I'm sorry, comment cards are turned in by the public if they want to comment on an agenda item. So I will entertain a motion.
I'll move we approve consent calendar items C1 through C9.
Thank you, Secretary Yearwood. Thank you, Director Sloan. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Dancel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Chair Lineback.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Reyes is absent.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on for our regular items of presentations, committee reports, and public hearings at this particular meeting. There are none, so we move on to item G, our regular calendar.
Thank you. Item G1, authorize the general manager to execute a landscape architectural agreement with Calendar Associates, Inc. in the amount of $561,118.50 for the design of the Grantline 208 Arista del Sol Community Park.
And I'd like to welcome Christina James to the stand.
Good evening, Chair Lineback and members of the board. Tonight, staff is recommending that the Board of Directors approve a landscape architectural agreement in the amount, with Calendar Associates, in the amount of $561,118.50 for the design of the Grantline 208 Arista del Sol Community Park. At your October 20th board meeting, the Board of Directors approved the request for proposals for the Grantline 208 Arista del Sol Community Park. This, the budget for this park is anticipated, including soft costs, to be approximately $8.5 million. This budget is conceptual, and it may need to be adjusted based on the public outreach process. After the board approved the RFP, staff advertised the RFP in the Sacramento Bee, and we also sent it to landscape architectural consultants on our qualified approved consultant list. Eight proposals were received from the district, and staff formed a committee of five members, including two members from outside agencies, the El Grove CSD and Southgate Recreation and Park District. The committee reviewed the proposals and then met to discuss their individual scores. The scoring was based on criteria that was outlined in the RFP. After the committee met, they came to an agreement on the top three firms to be selected for a shortlist interview. Those interviews took place on February 25th, and after the meeting, the committee members agreed that the top consultant to be selected was Calendar Associates. Some of the things that impressed the committee the most about Calendar was of the applicants, they had the most experience doing large-scale community parks that were equivalent to what was being, is being proposed for the Grantline Community Park. Upon approval of this contract, the general manager will sign the agreement, and the consultant will begin to work shortly after the contract execution. It's anticipated that this project will take approximately 18 months for the design and permitting process, and we will be in construction in the year 2024, 2025. So it's a big one. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the project or the project's schedule or the selection process. And also, we have Dan Miller with Calendar, who's available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Director Sloan, would you like to, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, a question. We haven't picked a name for this park yet, have we? We haven't, we didn't pick this name. So this is just a temporary name to refer to this development, right?
Correct. So if you look in the scope of work, we'll be going through a whole community meeting process before we get to a point where we can bring you a concept plan and a suggestion for naming. You know, typically with the turnkeys, that happens pretty quickly, but with these large community parks, we need to go through a large public planning process. And so that's described in the scope of work for this consultant.
Director Dancel?
Secretary.
Where is this park located at again?
Yeah, so it wasn't included in your packet tonight, but I have the RFQ, the previous one, in case anyone had questions about it. So I do have a map. I don't know.
Is it located at Thornton Hall in Cypress?
It's located along Americanos, and it's just south of the Douglas 98 development. So I don't know.
Only reason I ask is because there's a social media post today. We must have put a sign, or somebody put a sign up at Thornton Hall in Cypress about a future community park.
That, that was the Grantline side. Yeah, so they sent us a picture.
They're very excited.
Yeah. Oh, good. That's good to hear.
And they have suggestions.
Okay, well, we will hear them. Yeah, so it's kind of small, but you can see, there's my blue fingernail polish. So you can see, I didn't realize I had to do my nails tonight. So the top portion is in the Grantline 208 development. The bottom portion is in the Arista del Sol. And so you can see that it's there on the east side of our, of our district, 17 acres.
That's the park that, it's actually, it's in two different developments, but combined, it's going to be.
Correct.
And so this is just for the one half?
No.
Or for the whole thing?
From, from all of our discussions with the developers of these two different developments, the timing is going to work so that we will be able to accomplish this in one phase. It won't need to be phased. We've, we've been trying to make sure that it happens that way. It's just far more efficient and economical.
Yeah, yeah, good.
You know, that remains to be determined, but at this point in time, it's looking like we'll be able to do it all at one time.
No, that's it. I was just, because I saw that social media, that's all.
Is it, is it because it's a large community park that it's not a turnkey? Is this the normal process for?
It has, yes, it is.
Okay, yeah. I don't have anything, but.
Similar to Heron Landing.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I have a couple more questions. So with Heron Landing, a lot of the houses were already sold, and people were already, you know, established in that area. Here we have a newly, new construction going on. Are there, are there residents already living out there?
Well, there are. When you think about the radius of a community park, we already have quite a few residents living in the Doug 98 development here. We have folks moving into the Cressley development, which is to the west. So, you know, little by little, there are more members of the public, which is the reason that we did not want to delay this process, because we, we want to make sure that we get to the public before, you know, before it's too late.
Right, but the thing is that we have to consider that there possibly could be people approaching us saying that, you've got lighted tennis courts right outside my window or something, you know? And so those are things we have to be concerned about.
And that is, that noticing is part of our formal, so all of the homeowners that purchase a home here receive a covenant, a notice of active recreation, that shows them that there will be a community park with these potential uses. So those disclosures go out. They see them in a few places when they're buying a home. But it's a good point you bring up, because the people who attend these future public workshops will have to keep in mind that they're not making decisions just for themselves, but they're making decisions for their neighbors who are yet to move in. So it's a, it's a really, you know, it kind of puts a little more importance on the people that come to meetings.
As people make their decision on, on, you know, building a new home and purchasing a new home, do the ones, the lots go first that are around the park usually, do you think?
That's a good question. I'm not sure what the answer is.
Developer app? There's no, okay.
Okay, so this, for a little bit of contextual reference, the Labyrinth Park, Cypress Grove Park, and Pyramid Peak are in the, hey Christina, could you put that map back down here? And I'll kind of, just kind of give you some context to this. And. Okay, so on the north side of the park, this is where Labyrinth and Cypress Grove are. And then the Grantline 208 is the north half of this park, and all that subdivision is completely built at this point. I mean, I think they're putting the finishing touches on some of the last homes on the southernmost border. And they're just getting ready to start, they're doing all the grading and the roadways right now in Arista del Sol, which is the south half. And we're reviewing applications right now for Grantline 220, which is the next development immediately to the south. So right now, if we're going to just try to slap a number on it, I'd say about 50% of the surrounding homes are constructed around the east and north side of this park.
Good, okay, thank you.
And also, you had mentioned that it's an 18-month permitting process, so we're not talking like we're going out to do public outreach today. So it's going to take quite a lot of time, and as fast as they're growing here in this community, by 18 months from now, you could have a significant build-out by then, so.
That's great. All right, thank you.
Are we ready for a motion?
I move the Board of Directors authorize the general manager to execute a landscape architectural agreement with Calendar Associates, Inc. in the amount of $561,118.50 for the design of the Grantline 208 Arista del Sol Community Park.
Thank you, Director Dancel. And thank you, Director Sloan. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Dancel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Chair Lineback.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Reyes is absent.
Okay, thank you. We move on to item G2 now.
Item G2, adopt Resolution 21/22-37, authorizing the general manager to sign a partial release of certain real property from the terms and conditions of the park development agreement with Alta Vista LLC for its portion of properties in the Rio del Oro specific plan. And I'd like to welcome Park Planning and Development Manager Laura Taylor.
Good evening, members of the board, again. Okay, so the staff report in the packet, I will admit, is a very technical description of what we're asking you to approve tonight. So I want to simplify what it is that we're asking, and it's really an administrative cleanup item. The partial release from the park development agreement was requested by Price Walker of Elliott Homes. And Elliott Homes plans to sell the industrial parcels for use as a warehouse distribution center, okay? And the purchaser of these lots would like to have as clean as a title report as they can possibly get. And right now, our park development agreement shows up on that title report, and it's a 32-page document. And unless you sit down and read the entire document, you're not, you don't realize that that document doesn't apply to the non-residential parcels in all of Rio del Oro, right? It applies to residential parcels. That means multifamily or single-family parcels. And so, so what this partial release does is it just provides a more obvious notice that the park development agreement doesn't apply to those specific parcels. And so that's something that we can do. We can do with this administrative action. I guess it's not, it's a board action, but it's an administrative cleanup. And so because the developer has requested it, and we strive to provide good customer service, and it's something that we can do, we are bringing that to you for your consideration and approval. And so if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's kind of the simplified version of what we're trying to accomplish tonight.
Okay, thank you. Director Sloan? Secretary Yearwood?
If this ever was rezoned, say, for residential or something like that, that would, we would, you know, fall under our PDA, right?
Correct, but in.
I don't think it'll ever happen, but.
Well, this is under the, the flight path to, so they can't build residences on these lots, so that will never happen. And, you know, this is the first actual request of this kind that we've ever had. And, you know, we'll just, if we ever do get another one, then we'll have to consider, you know, the possibility of if it were to be rezoned, is that, are we willing to do this? And, but in this particular case, it is acceptable. It works. There's no risk to the park district. Because if it gets, if it, let's say it was a parcel in some other part of the district, and it was an industrial parcel. and it was a industrial parcel, and 20 years from now it got rezoned, then the onus would be on the District Park Planning Department to make sure that when that proposal comes in, that we see it and we reapply the, the park development agreement to it. So it would be a second step we'd have to do later. But in this case, because there's no residential allowed under that flight zone, that's not a risk for us.
Well, it made me think, so Elliott in Stone Creek is putting some, some kind of houses where there wasn't originally planned, right?
Right, but in that case, uh, the villages of Zinfindele, back in those days, they called it a memorandum of understanding. It applies in the villages of Zinfindele.
Yeah, I'm just, okay.
Yeah.
Well, is there any way to give that release that says, "So long as these parcels remain zoned for industrial, they will not be subject to?"
No. I mean, I've reviewed it with the, with our attorney, and, um, we talked about the risk and the, and we would just have to reapply it. We would have to redo it. It would be another process that we'd have to do in the, during the entitlement reviews if it were to get rezoned in the future.
So say 20 years down the line. It would fall under an infill development anyway at that point, if it ever should happen, right? It would still be subject to parkland requirements and stuff?
Yes, that's a good question, yes. Um, and it, it would be, it would be subject to whatever the infill parkland dedication requirements were in place at the time that the land authority has published in their ordinance. So in this case, it would be the, the city of Rachel Cordova's.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, would anyone care to make a motion?
I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 21/22-37, authorizing the General Manager to sign a partial release of certain real property for, for the term and condition of the park development agreement with Alta Vista LLC for, for its portion of the properties in its Rio del Oro specific plan.
Thank you, Director Danzel. Second, anyone?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Director Sloan. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
No.
Chair Lineback.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes is absent. The motion passes.
Okay, now we're on to item G3.
Item G3, authorize the General Manager to execute the necessary documents to renew the Employee Health, Dental, Life, Vision, Employee Assistance Program, EAP, and the Long-Term Disability Plans effective July 1st, 2022. And I'd like to welcome Human Resource Manager, Ann-Joel White.
Good evening, uh, Chair Lineback and Board of Directors. It's that time of year again, so quickly, that we, um, bring forward all of our benefit programs for the board to authorize, uh, General Manager Larkin to execute contracts for. As you'll see as I go through each one of these staff reports, um, the main theme for this year, since we are in the, currently doing our, uh, total compensation and classification study, is that we are trying to leave this as it is, and once we get the results of that study, we may consider making amendments to our benefit program. So I would like to make a correction on this first staff report regarding our benefit programs. Um, I just received notice yesterday from our broker that she, um, actually negotiated a reduced, um, cost or a reduced, uh, renewal for our dental and our vision. And those, particularly, so it was a little bit after, um, we already submitted everything to, uh, Clerk Jones, so I do want to just give you kind of the verbal update of what that is. So as it was, there was no increase in our premiums for this year from last year. It's common, actually, for these ancillary benefits to not increase very much. Uh, they do every so, several years. But she did get some quotes from some other providers and use that information to negotiate at a reduced cost, um, with Guardian for dental and vision, like I said. And so she, um, has, has those reduced by 5%. And that would be effective, um, July 1st, um, if we move forward with those programs. And so what that means, if you look at your, um, kind of, uh, fiscal impact, um, it's, you know, there have been years here, you know, 10 years ago, where they've gone up considerably 8, 9, 10%. But in the last three years, it's been pretty small incremental. It's expensive, so it's a lot of money anyway, but, um, so this year we were expecting a 5.3% increase for all plans, and that actually, with the 5% decrease, um, has reduced the overall, it's now the increase is 4.6%. So that is an, an adjustment that I'd like to make you aware of. Uh, with that, we are, you know, proposing that the plans remain the same. Uh, there are very few changes with the actual plans. The providers change, they change little deductibles, little copays, pretty much every single year, and this year there's only one small change where, um, for, um, Sutter Platinum Plan, the copays have gone down slightly, so that's not bad. We'll take it. Um, and so with that, I'd like to answer any questions you might have.
Director Sloan? No? Danzel? Secretary Yearwood? No? And believe it or not, I don't have any questions either.
[laughing].
We'll take that reduction.
We'll take that reduction. Actually, that is my comment. A reduction? Seriously? I've never heard of a reduction.
Yes.
Yes, that's awesome. Very good. Okay, uh, roll call vote, please. Secretary Yearwood, I heard you first. Thank you very much. And Director Danzel, I'll take that as a second. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Chair Lineback.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Reyes is absent.
Okay, now item G4.
Item G4, authorize the General Manager to allow an annual deposit of $1,500 for a single employee and $3,000 for employee plus spouse slash child slash family into a health savings account, or HSA, for employees that select a high deductible health plan effective July 1st, 2022.
All right, thank you. So, uh, again, this is for individuals who, uh, select a high deductible plan. We provide this contribution. There is a correction at the bottom. We've been doing this for the last nine years, not 89 years. Uh, oops. But for the last nine years, we've been providing this exact contribution. And there's been, um, some requests and discussions of whether or not we might want to increase that amount because the deductibles really just keep going up. The out-of-pocket max can, you know, typically go up every year. But we do want to make sure that this plan, the premiums are equivalent to what we're paying with the, you know, a typical HMO or copay type plan. And they're getting a little bit closer and closer. There's this about a 7% savings that we have. Some people, it costs more to do this, and some people it costs less, but overall, there's a 7% savings, um, to, for individuals to choose this plan. And the reason why they do is because they get that health savings account that they deposit their own monies in if they want, or the employer, you know, the district contribution. They can use it for all medical type needs, dental vision, um, to cover their deductible. And people who have this really enjoy this type of plan. But, um, it helps them to have this additional contribution from the district to help cover those high deductibles. Uh, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Director Sloan?
So when I hear the words, uh, savings account, I think interest or some type of a thing that's going to gain, make money on those, on this, on the funds? Is that not the way this works?
You know, that's a good question. What, what we do is, um, when someone chooses this high deductible plan, you know, they have to pay their deductible before, and for an individual, it could be anywhere from $2,400 to $2,800. They have to pay that first amount before they, their insurance kicks in. Uh, we put that, those funds into that account, that savings account, and we don't have access to it, other than putting it in the account for them. Do they gain a little bit of interest? Uh, they, I'm sure they probably can, um, but, uh, I don't know that it's significant. And there is sometimes a little bit of a, a fee, administrative fee as well, that they pay for. So, um, for them, and that money rolls over year after year after year. For the type of employee who rarely goes to the doctor, that might be a really good benefit for them, um, because they'll be covered. Some people who, like myself, urgent care today, who, uh, you know, go frequently, more often than we'd like, um, it's better for me to use like a copay or HMO type plan. So the, it is a bank account that we don't have access to. We only have access to put the funds in. And that's how that, um, HSA works. But they can't have it unless they have the high deductible plan.
Right. That's money that they need to have liquid, be able to pull it out, right, whenever they need it, right?
Yeah, they, they get a, a MasterCard that goes with it, and when they go, typically, they'll go see their doctor, and then they'll get the bill for the full amount, you know, not, not the $30 copay. They'll get the bill for whatever, $200, $300 to see their physician, and they can use their card to make those payments directly to their physician.
No, Director, Secretary Yearwood?
Yeah, and you know, those can all, those funds can only be used for medical expenses, qualified medical expenses. They can't go on a trip to Cancun with.
Right, but I was just thinking, there could be like a money market or something.
Oh.
Get a couple percent interest. Right.
Yeah, I mean, there's some pretty tight rules on it. Not every bank provides this. We have to utilize a, an account, a bank that will provide this type of service. Uh, and I believe there's, could be some scrutiny, um, that's had. There's some things that you have to seek reimbursement, but most of the time, um, individuals can use their card. Let's say they did purchase something that wasn't medical-related, that would be between them and the IRS. But we give them the information. Our employees are well-educated on what the use is for, for these type of programs.
So, I decided to look it up, just because we're here. So through Bank of America, I don't know, that's why, what the average person has in theirs, but for between $0 and $2,500, it's .01% that they earn. And at the max, at over $25,000, it's .07%. So, yeah, not, not, not going to earn a whole lot on it, so, yeah.
I don't know if it's meant to. It's meant to be there, there available for medical use.
Did you say that employees could contribute to this account, too?
They can. Um, there is a maximum per year that, that goes up every single year. I think the maximum that can go into the account is listed here, or it's listed in our, um, Benefit Renewal Program. They can't put an endless amount in there. Um, I think it's in the neighborhood of, I'm looking it up right now. I don't know it off the top of my head. Okay, individuals can contribute up to $3,650, and that's including the CRPD contribution. So for an individual, they would get 1,500 from us, and they could, um, add to it up to 3,650. For a family, it's $7,300. And there is an additional ability for anyone over the age 55 for an additional $1,000 catch-up contribution. Again, that would come out of their paycheck, um, and it is federal tax-free, but not state tax-free. I don't know why, [laughing], but that is the case.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions, I will entertain the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Director Sloan.
I move the General Manager to allow an annual deposit of $1,500 for a single employee and $3,000 for employee plus spouse, child, family into a health savings account, an HSA, for employees that select a high deductible health plan effective July 1st, 2022.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Secretary Yearwood. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Chair Lineback.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Reyes is absent.
Okay, thank you. And we are now on to item G5.
Item. Item G5, authorize the General Manager to execute the necessary documents to renew the Flexible Spending Account, or FSA, with Benefit Resource, Inc., BRI, for eligible employees effective July 1st, 2022.
Okay, so this is the, the last item for our benefit program this evening. This is, um, a flexible spending account, a little bit different than the health savings account. This is completely voluntary for the employee to contribute to this account, um, to help them pay, uh, for copays, maybe very small deductibles, um, and medical care. They also can contribute into a separate account that's also an FSA for childcare. At this time, um, an employee can deposit up to $2,850 per year for medical-related expenses and $5,000, uh, for dependent care. Now, um, an FSA, the really big difference between this and a health savings account is that it doesn't roll over year after year. As you remember, this, there is, but we have set it up to where some rolls over, $570, uh, the maximum allowable by the IRS. And that really helps people kind of budget what they think they're going to need. Oh, I need glasses, and I need this, but, you know, I might put a little extra, not too much, you know, so that it rolls over if I don't use it all throughout the year. This does reduce the employee's taxable income, um, and which also reduces the taxes the district pays for employees. And last year, or this current fiscal year, employees have deposited $25,000, $25,660. And those of us who have it really love it. It's really helpful, uh, to plan for large purchases, large dental bills and so forth. It does cost the district a little bit of money. It costs, um, an administrative fee of 900 a year. Uh, we do believe that there is some offset based on the reduced taxes that we're paying, um, on these employees. So we would love it if this could be renewed again, uh, for this year.
Director Sloan, do you have any questions or comments?
$25,000 is sitting in an account somewhere?
Yeah, employees have, are depositing from their paychecks, um, to, uh, BRI, so we're deducting it from their paychecks, $25,000 this fiscal year, um, that we put into this account that they can use for, um, medical expenses. And, and childcare. Childcare can be a lot. I mean, this is federal and state tax, um, free. And so for someone who's paying, you know, $5,000 or more, childcare is very expensive. To put this money, uh, come out of every single paycheck throughout the year and have that reduce their taxable income and use those funds for childcare makes a lot of, um, sense for people. And those of us who use it for that, um, it's very important. I use it for medical, and it's been wonderful to just have those funds available for me specifically for that.
Director Danzel?
In my personal life, we have, we have this, and what was nice, and I hope it happened for the district, we, through my wife's work, they rolled it all, they didn't, they allowed us to roll it over during COVID, which was nice. So unfortunately, December 31st of last year, we had a god-awful amount that we had to spend, and then it was finding, finding the right company that we could buy medical supplies from, things we knew we were going to need. And, um, so I hope the district had that benefit. But, um, you know, for me personally, I, I love it. I mean, it, it definitely helps. We look at things, and we change year to year. Like my wife breaks, breaks a pair of glasses. We know that the money is there to buy it because, for some reason, she doesn't like, you know, Costco $35 frames. She likes, you know, a little bit better, but, so, things like that, so we can budget for that, or, you know, kids growing up, or dental work, things like that. So, yeah, for. So yeah, for for us personally, I enjoy it. So I'm glad that the district is hopefully going to continue to to offer this to to our employees.
Yeah, we did provide that benefit because people weren't going to the doctor and people's employees' children were not going to childcare. They were closed. So we took advantage of the allowances to roll over those funds.
I just wish they had that childcare one when my kids were in school. They apparently hadn't invented that yet, so I paid full price. That's all.
Okay, thank you. I have no questions. So is there a motion on this item?
I'll move the board of directors authorize the general manager to execute the necessary documents to renew the flexible spending account, FSA, with Benefits Resource, Inc., BRI, for eligible employees effective July 1, 2022.
Thank you, Secretary Yearwood.
Second.
Thank you, Director Danzel. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Chair Lineback.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Reyes is absent.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to item H, Board of Director items.
Thank you. There was no training in the last period, so I'll move on to board member reports.
All right, I have to pull that up. Because my iPad did not update, I cannot pull up my board package on my iPad. So I'm on my tiny little phone.
No, you can't. Forget your password?
It hasn't asked me for one. I don't, this thing drives me crazy. I'm not an Apple person. Director Sloan.
Thank you. I want to go back to March 19. And at Village Green Park, they held a festival there called the Holy Festival of Color. The Tellingana Association of Sacramento put this thing on. It was sponsored in part by the city of Rancho Cordova and other sponsors that they they got their of their organization. And it is the, I'll call it the awakening of spring, the as spring has sprung. And and what it was was, if you can imagine, 500 people, most of them wearing white. So it's like a blank canvas and everyone's got different color. It's made out of cornstarch, but it's colors like chalk. And they they throw at each other. And everyone gets painted a different colors, mixed colors, whatever. And it's kind of a kind of interesting, fabulous to watch, but you have to be very careful with your camera equipment because it tends, people tend to come up to you and even though you say, oh, I'm trying to stay on the outside, I still got color thrown at me on my camera. But the park was the first time they held it at our park. They used to have it, they usually held it at Navigator School. And I think the the school districts were still closed down at the time and the park district was open. And it's a nice event. There was a little bit of excess color on our on our on our park that we the park district wasn't counting on. Took a while to clean up. But as this festival grows, when and what I heard is they're they're hoping to move into numbers that are like in the in the thousands. So if that was the case, I don't know if that park is big enough for it. But it's definitely in the future. I could see it being in a larger green space area. So it's it's less cumbersome of of what's left when they leave all over the park. But I highly recommend you guys, you know, going to it one day and just, you know, participating in it. It's kind of, it's really fun. On March 26, I with the rest of my board members, attended the Mills Middle School softball complex ribbon cutting, which was a, they opened it softly last year without any fanfare. And this year, they they were able to put it together and really have a nice ceremony and ribbon cutting and dignitary speak. And it was a beautiful day. And on top of that was the opening of the 57th season of Cordova Girls Softball. So our our parks are really flourishing. This is probably last month and this month and next month. We're very, very busy in the parks. A lot of festivals that are awakening after the pandemic. They're coming back. And unfortunately, and Andrea, I was just thinking as you talk about dental care, that you must be sitting on 400 eggs full of candy, 500, 600? 600 eggs full of candy that was supposedly for the Breka Easter egg hunt that was canceled because of the weather. So I'm surprised she didn't bring a few to put on the chairs. But I don't know what we're going to do with those. But maybe we can find a way to get them out to the people in the park or something. Right. Oh, you were still out there. Were the eggs already out on the, okay, you didn't put them out, right? Yeah. Well, the next day was a pretty full park. We had volleyball, we had kids on the on the the apparatuses. And I mean, that would have been probably a nice time to bring things out, too. That's about it. Thank you.
Mine's short and sweet, hopping and hunting at Hagan. Once again, good event. Myself and Secretary Yearwood were there. At first, we were like, oh, small crowd. But as as it got closer and closer to time, it got about almost back to where it used to be pre-pandemic. You know, staff does always does a great job of putting that event on. Our former administrator yelled at me that I wasn't putting out eggs correctly.
You got counseled.
I got counseled by by administrator because he didn't like the way I was putting eggs up. That's fine. But they got out and the kids, Neil. But it was a good event, a good turnout. Staff did exactly what they were supposed to do. I just, I didn't hear any complaints from anybody. So it's a great event.
I I was, I had a bag and I was just tossing them out of the bag. So there was four or five together in little groups.
That way they bump heads.
Exactly. But Neil didn't like that.
Secretary Yearwood.
Rookie. At least I didn't step on eggs.
Well, that grass was kind of high out there. But anyways, I digress. I attended the Mills Middle School softball complex grand opening. It's a wonderful facility. I'm happy for them. I mean, I remember those fields looked pretty much the same for my girls when they played on them when I was a kid and watched people play on them. So it's a wonderful facility. I know Rod is very happy to have an actual snack bar with a three section sink. So he doesn't have to take all his dishes home and wash them at home. So right after that was the opening of the softball league. Their numbers are higher than years past. I think it's some of their highest numbers, which is good to hear. I heard Little League is also enjoying a robust year as well. So seems like the ending of the pandemic or closing of it has gotten people wanting to get their kids back out and doing things. So that's a good thing. So I'm saddened to hear that Becky is being retired. The logo of the league is getting a getting a facelift next year, apparently. And that's not true?
They're going to add to.
Oh, they're going to.
More diversity in the players.
Oh. Okay. Okay. Yeah, we call her Becky. But so then I attempted attempted attended hopping and hunting at Hagan. Again, it was, we were kind of like, ooh, it's light crowds. But then as the day progressed, the folks showed up. So the park looked great, the ponds looked great, the new sheds at the pool looked great. So I mean, I only thing I suggest is maybe an aquatics type of egg hunt next year. Something to think about. So but that's it. Yeah, it was a great day. It was good to see Neil and not get counseled by him. So you have to go like this, spread them out. All right, and then step on some of them. That's it.
Okay, lessons in.
Egg dispensing.
Egg dispensing, kind of looked like chicken feed dispensing. What do I know about that? I too attended the Mills Middle School softball complex grand opening and it was great. Tons of people out there. And a lot of our local legislators showed up and it was very, very nice. And I actually did stay for the softball opening day ceremonies, too, which were fun to see all the girls dressed up. And the younger ones were flipping adorable. They really were. And then I also, we had a special district advisory committee meeting that Inez and I attended via Zoom. And they covered a lot of issues. Apparently, well, we were told at that meeting that you could apply for revenue losses out of COVID funds, but it that ship may have sailed. There were some agenda items that we discussed that were set there by the the head of LAFCO, and then he didn't attend the meeting. So there was some confusion about why we what we were supposed to be talking about. But at any rate, CSDA was there and they suggested forming a county chapter with them to work for advocacy and discussions. So apparently, some counties do have their own chapters with CSDA. And they were thinking that might be a good thing for Sacramento County to do. They there was a little bit of discussion about, you know, Zoom versus hybrid meetings. And going forward, there are still people uncomfortable meeting in person. And so and then I guess, last but not least, Arcade Creek wanted everyone to know that they paid off their unfunded pears. So good for them, okay? And while I was not at the hopping and hunting, my daughter and grandchildren were. And they loved it, had a blast, you know, stayed for the whole thing and just had nothing but good to say about the event. So, okay. And now we are on to item H two.
Item H two A, nominate a district representative to run for election to the California Association of Recreation and Park Districts, CARPD. Board of Directors, Director at Large or Administrator Representative, and adopt Resolution 21 slash 22 dash 38, supporting the nomination and service on the board if elected.
Thank you, Shelby. So this item comes to us as we're preparing for the annual CARPD conference. And as you know, we have a longstanding history of being involved on the board. A Director Danzel is currently serving. The last time we did bring this item to this board, the board did not take action on the nomination. You have in your packet included the slate of officers. And also, they are asking for a Director at Large or a General Manager Representative candidate. The election is scheduled to take place on May 19 at the conference in Southlake Tahoe. And if the board desires to do a nomination, the nominee would be required to submit a letter to me by Monday, May 9. Thank you.
Okay, so is there a director sitting here who has an interest in this? Director Sloan, okay, sounds good. Anybody else? Okay. All right, perhaps then I may make this motion. How's that? Am I allowed to?
Yes.
Okay. I move the Board of Directors nominate Director Rick Sloan to run for election to the California Association of Recreation and Park Districts, CARPD, Board of Directors, and adopt Resolution 21 slash 23 dash 38, supporting the nomination and service on the board if elected. Is there a second?
You can.
Thank you, Director Sloan. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Chair Lineback.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Reyes is absent.
Okay, thank you. We move on to item I, comments by staff on non agenda items.
Thank you. Item I one is the district wide monthly progress report for April. And I'll turn it over to General Manager, Clark.
Thank you, Clark Jones. So we had a busy month again, of course. We interviewed three consulting firms to determine the best firm to work with us to create our optimized plan that will serve as the CRPD guide for the next 10 years. We had a group of five, including MacAdell, Jill Nuns, Laura Taylor, myself, and Paul Mutin from Kasumne CSD. The announcement of who this election will be will come in May as we're in the process of negotiating that contract. So it's very exciting. It's going to be an amazing project that we will have some guiding tools for us moving into the future here. We also had an opportunity to submit a funding request proposal for Sacramento County. They are going through right now the American Recovery Plan, the COVID relief funds that they've received. And I was fortunate enough to have Don Natoli reach out to me and ask that we submit a proposal. So this proposal and the amount was related to the Rosemont Sports Court project that was, in essence, underfunded from the proposal from the SHRA grant. So from that, we will find the results of that. Hopefully, I'm going to get in touch with them by Friday and see if that actual topic was presented. But it was slated for April 12. So I'm going to follow up with them and see if we did get an allocation and if so, how much. We are also working with staff on presenting some water use data to negotiate water connection fees and the appropriate irrigation systems for new developments within the Sacramento County Water Agency jurisdiction. So Sacramento County Water Water Agency is providing that service for the new area of Rancho Cordova primarily. We've had great discussions about how this is negatively going to impact our ability to fund amenities and parks by connection fees, utility fees. So we're pulling data on what we currently do in our parks and the goal being water conservation. So we want to make sure that we're demonstrating the goal that we both share and that we can do that goal with the existing examples of us using maybe a smaller than what they're recommending connection for that water to be sent out into the park. So board to come on that. It's potentially hopefully going to save us some money if we're able to, you know, let them know and educate them on what our actual water needs are and how that relates to the impact it could have on our parks being amenitized for, you know, the folks that are in those neighborhoods. We also just wanted to remind you, and I think I have, the CARPD Board Member Roundtable Meeting is coming up on Monday, April 25. I believe that's the first time they're offering that Zoom meeting. And if you are available, please RSVP to Danielle and she'll be happy to register you for that Zoom link. Overall spending is under budget 11% in comparison to 12% last month. We've added some capital improvement projects. We are still, you know, fixing our older infrastructure here. So sometimes all good plans from the beginning are foiled a little bit by what needs to be fixed or repaired. So there is a list of repairs that we needed to make this past month. We added a Hagan Community Park well pump repair, the Mather Sports Complex relamping of the sports field lights, added the Cordova Golf Course replacement of the well pump and Rosemont Community Park dugout roof repairs. Some projects are over budget due to the inflation and updated quotes. Overall, the funds are still within budget and no board action is required at this time. You know, we're also in thick with developing the preliminary budget and we're finding some heartburn as it relates to inflation and, you know, the cost of supplies and everything just going really up, up, up. So we have an amazing team here. So we will be working it to the bone to figure out what the best proposal is coming forward for the preliminary budget to be presented, I believe, in June. So we're really working hard to try to make that work this year. We are in recruitment in many different areas. The summer seasonal employment is actually going pretty well. The aquatics positions are, for the most part, not completely filled, but close. The aquatics positions are for the most part not completely filled, but close to being filled. Right, Brandy? So we're excited about that. That was a little bit of a concern that we would have, that we wouldn't have, you know, those critical lifeguard safety, water safety folks onboard. But Brandy and the HR staff have done an amazing job this year with their unique recruitment ways. And I'm super proud of their going out of the box and getting folks to work with us in a time where no one wants to work anymore. So thank you guys for that. I appreciate it and all the work you've done with that. We have our sheds at the pool. Hallelujah. So the pool took two years, the sheds took another year. Who would have thought? But they're in and they're awesome. And we're excited to be able to utilize those. We have a flood of development proposals that the Park Planning and Development Crew have been working diligently on. There is a total of 18 projects in design and construction at this point. So it's very overwhelming. And Laura and her staff are absolutely amazing. I could not ask for better people to be handling this flood, I call it, with ease and strategy and its complexities. Tonight you even got presented some complexity that is in addition to just a general review. So we have very thoughtful, very intelligent people that know how to actually put this in the box that needs to be ticked in order for us to move it forward without it being brain surgery. That's our goal, is not to make things brain surgery. So thank you, Laura, and your staff are incredible. And that, I will turn it over to Jill Nuns, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Well, thank you. Good evening. All right, I have some breaking news. The Riviera East Monument sign is back up. And it's straight. It's not crooked. It looks fantastic. So yay. It was just a little crooked. It, it's all straight now. So we're good. So Riviera East Monument sign, yay. Okay, Parks, we have lots going on in Parks. So while Parks wants the rain tomorrow, the golf course doesn't, but we want the rain. So rain tomorrow, tonight, tomorrow. So we're happy about that. But Parks is activating, it's spring. They're getting everything ready for the summer and all the nice sports that are going to be on the fields and kids enjoying all of our parks. But like you heard earlier, we have had some slide repairs that needed, you know, some replacements because of supply chain issues. We just didn't get those parts in. They finally came in. So both Countryside Park and Larchmont Community Park have their slides back and the community gets to enjoy them again. So I appreciate the community's patience. It's really out of our hands. We do the best that we possibly can. So I appreciate Jim and his staff being patient as we're waiting for those, those parts to come in. And we'll have other parts throughout the year that also will be a supply chain issue. And we just deal with it as best as we can. We put signs up with any kind of piece of equipment or playground that's down to let people know that it's going to be down for a while. So excited that those two are back up and, and operational. At the Hagan Community Center, if you haven't been over there lately, we have replaced door, some doors and some glass replacement on Building 2, which is that front office, and the hideout. So they received new entry and exit double doors, one sliding glass door and one sliding glass door was replaced with a window. That was something that we, it was long overdue. I think Brandy and her staff were trying to lock the door in some really crazy odd way. So they get to lock the door as normal people now. So we're super excited about that. Over at the Cordova Golf Course, they had another fantastic month in the month of March. So they were 3% over last year. And then also March 7th through the 11th, the golf course maintenance staff did a wonderful job aerating the greens. And that's something that is so key to the golf course and making sure that those greens are playable. And it's just, it makes a world of difference. So we appreciate Vijay and his staff. And if you haven't been out to the golf course, I know that I say this every time, but it literally looks the best it has ever looked. We had some officials out there the other day rating the golf course. And the guy was like, am, am I in the right spot? I've never seen this golf course look so good. So kudos again to Chase and Vijay and his staff for doing an excellent job with that golf course, with the resources that they have. And then we're still waiting on Sacramento County to approve the permit for Judge Netting to move forward with putting that additional safety netting up on the driving range. So we keep plugging away and hopefully we'll get that permit here soon. So. Marketing communications is busy as usual. You see that the rec guide is included in your packet. So we're able again to do a mailing of the rec guide, which is fantastic. Super excited to have that back. And then Shelby was out at the hopping and hunting and was able to put a video together, which was awesome. So thank you for putting that video together. And you can see on page 162, there's also a picture of Secretary Yearwood and Director Danzel with the former administrator, Neil Orchard. I did not get yelled at or step on eggs when I put them on the ground. So I'm not sure what happened, but I didn't get yelled at at all. So that's fantastic.
I don't see any pictures to prove you were actually doing that.
The grass does look high, though.
It's supposed to be high so you can hide the eggs. It was mowed the next day. Don't worry about it. We're good. We're good. But speaking of recreation, again, a great job by the recreation and the park staff for putting on the hopping in Hagan. We really appreciate all of the sponsors, California American Water, Cordova Rotary Club, Cordova Kiwanis, Music and More Entertainment, and the Somerset Senior Living. We appreciate all those sponsors, including ourselves, because we do sponsor that event. Another great event, the kids had a whole bunch of fun. And so we're excited to be back doing events in person so that the community can have a bunch of fun. So thank you to recreation and a special thank you to Brandy, who was the CRPD chick all day long. Good job, Brandy. I almost put our selfie in there, but then I decided not to. So. Aquatics is booming, which is fantastic to hear. As you heard, there was an update on lifeguards and aquatic staff, which is great news. But we've got clinics, we've got swim teams. Swim lessons for summer and spring are filling up. We've got safety classes. So a whole bunch of things going on at the pool. We can't wait to, to open up for the summer. I did want to let everyone know that, that we are gonna close the Cordova Community Pool on July 3rd and 4th due to the July, you know, 4th celebration from the CCC. All of our other pools, splash parks and pads will be open for those days. But we are gonna, because it's just so crazy at the park. It's just, I don't, I don't even know how we would open with the parking situation. So it'll give a good break for our lifeguards as well for two days and our aquatic staff. So I just wanted to let you know that we'll be closed for those two days at the Cordova Community Pool. Preschool is, is, is doing really well. So we're excited for the preschool. We have lots of youth and team programs in sports. I wanted to highlight that we have a new Pee Wee Soccer League. We have four teams with 28 players involved in that league. It's a great league. We have a 30-minute practice followed by a 30-minute game. And kids are able to enjoy that on Saturday mornings out at the Mather Sports Complex. And then we had another, and are having another successful Junior Kings Basketball League. I just love that we've got youth basketball. So thank you, Nina, to you and your staff. We had a total of 82 participants register for our spring K through 5 Junior Kings League. So that's really exciting. I'm glad that we've been able to get that youth basketball league off the ground. And then we've had another successful winter youth street hockey league that, that we have. Have lots of adult sports and sports leagues going on that you guys can, can read about. And lots of senior programs as usual. So the senior, seniors are definitely active. And we are just so grateful for NOSEC and the staff that put on those great events. And with that, I will go over the Board of Directors' special event invitation. There's lots of them. So we're back, which is fantastic. I'm sorry to hear that the Easter egg hunt got canceled. I hope you got your money back, Andrea, for that. Kids' Day in the Park is this Saturday over at Hagan Community Park. It's hosted by the CCC. The CRPD will be represented there with a couple of tents and booths and doing some activities. So if you get a chance, come by Hagan this Saturday between 11:00 and 3:00 and check out Kids' Day in the Park. There, like General Manager Patrick Larkin mentioned, there's a CARPD Board Member Roundtable on Monday, April 25th from 4:00 to 5:00 PM. And then CRPD, we have a National Arbor Day celebration that we're doing this year and tree planting. And that's going to be at Prospect Hill Park on Thursday, April 28th at 10:00 AM. So I'm hoping that you all can join us for that Arbor Day celebration. At the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center, we have Cinco de Mayo on Wednesday, May 4th at 11:30. And then if you turn that flyer over, we've got a community yard sale at Lincoln Village Community Park on Saturday, May 7th from 8:00 AM to 2:00. We have a Good Neighbor Day that we've been invited to by the City of Rancho Cordova at Sun River Park on Saturday, May 7th between 11:00 and 1:00 PM. So if you're interested in coming out and joining Shelby at the Good Neighbor Park, she'd love to see you. We have Meet the Machines, woo-hoo, back in person at Hagan Community Park on Saturday, May 14th from 10:00 to 1:00 PM. Nina and her staff are working on getting a whole bunch of fun activities for that event. The I-Fest and Wines of the World is back at the Village Green, hosted by the CCC on Saturday, March 14th from 5:00 to 9:00. And last but not least, a pizza party at Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center on Wednesday, May 18th at 11:30 AM. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move on to item J, informational items.
Thank you. We have the Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach. I just wanted to highlight the three letters that are included. We have a letter of opposition to AB 1910. And then the letter that General Manager Larkin was referencing regarding the funding proposal. And we also got a very nice thank you letter from Leadership Rancho Cordova for hosting the recreation module. And then item J2 is your calendar.
Okay, so there being nothing left on the agenda, I am going to adjourn this meeting to our next regular meeting, which has been rescheduled to avoid conflict of the CARPD conference. And so our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, May 25th at 6:30 PM. And the time is 7:50.